And how often does it get flipped?
I know.
You know, this whole town is vulnerable to floods. And we've adapted, okay? We don't need to make it worse by more. Anyways, that wraps it up. That's all I have to say.
I have Tiago B.
Yeah, let's speak. Um, little one, leave me. Uh, we moved from the city since 2016 up here because, uh, we like the way it is. You know, couldn't move to Westchester, you know, Rockland. We didn't want to. We like the way it is up here. And, um, I, I'm alright to change that's going on. Um, we moved from the city because, believe it or not, there was a kid from my house in the city that got run over. He got killed, he was 16 years old. My son, I wanna, I wanna see my son buying his bike to Stewart to get a, to get a milkshake and not be worried about it. Fifty-seven cars in this area is gonna be madness. You know, that worries me. How, you know, I can't take my son walking by himself, you know? This amount of cars, it's insane. I'm retired law enforcement, just retired. City's a mess. Nobody has to say anything. They do whatever they want. And this is what they're doing now. You know, I, I feel like I don't have a say in it. You know, and, um, I, I don't agree with this. I don't want this. I don't want this. I think it's gonna change this whole entire village, you know, and, um, I don't want it. You know, I just don't want it. It's gonna change everyone.
And we need to restore the natural environment.
I have Reagan Costantino. Um, Reagan Costantino, 18 Huron Road. Um, my number one problem is, I believe next week, we have to have it somewhere else because people out here can't hear it, and I know that that's not correct. I know that there's rules against that, that everybody should be able to speak and hear without getting COVID.
Maybe a little air conditioning too.
I formally requested overriding to the board to have a larger venue for this because you knew that there was gonna be a huge turnout, and we were shot down. So please help me understand why and can, can we fix this for the next time?
The high school.
This is unfair to all these people.
The high school, our high school.
Okay. So that's, everybody knows, everybody heard that, we should, you know, let's try to work it out in the high school. My second point is that if anybody on the, you know, traffic committee, whatever, takes a ride down 208 from Washingtonville into Monroe, let's say to, to the diner, anything, you tell me that that's the way it was a few years ago?
No.
Try taking a ride down that road on Saturday. Now, my last question is what's gonna happen when that building comes down without us approving it? I'm sorry, and I know that sounds like fighting, but we have to look at the truth and the facts, what has happened around us. There are people that are buying properties and doing things and doing things illegally, and there's no repercussion. They get a little note on their door, you know? They don't pay the fine. You, yeah? Show us that, well, us people that, you know, get fined, get a, um, work order stopped, we stop. I didn't see any stopping on Claude Road. I didn't even see any stopping at Nellin. Just the two right there. And now the sign's gone, that's probably because all the asbestos is probably gone overnight. I'm trying to, to, to be very nice about what I'm saying, but it's the truth. What are we gonna do when it just happens, even though we didn't vote on it?
I'd be an answer for that tonight, I think.
We, we, like, I just wanna know. I mean, we're all trying to do this legally, we really are. Everybody's trying to be nice. Everybody's pushing when people get out of hand and saying the wrong things, okay? But what's gonna happen when they break the order and they just go ahead and do whatever they want? Claude Road, right there, come on! They got the order, and what do they do? They go around the other side to Arlington and they're plowing down. I went up there as a layperson, just drove right up there, took pictures, showed everybody I know. What are we gonna do? Well, what can be done? Maybe the police have to answer it too. If we called, like, are we gonna protect it?
Can you answer that question?
The project that she's thinking about is not located in the village jurisdiction.
You're right, but this building is located here.
Yeah, correct.
And without us voting, or before we all make a decision about, yes, it should come down, or you take it down, whatever, before the decision's made, it could possibly come down.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? I'm not saying, I'm not saying it will, I'm not saying, it could possibly come down. What's gonna stop that from happening? And what can we do? Seriously.
In other words, everybody wants to build it, and nobody's...
Whatever the limits of power is particularly me, I would not tolerate it. Everybody has to do whatever they want.
Could we get the cops involved?
Whatever it takes.
Some jail time maybe?
Making hearsay like that is not gonna assist or help in this conversation.
Sorry, sir, that's not hearsay.
Building fear.
Yes, it's not hearsay.
You want to answer the question, I'm asking your question. Building fear.
That's a very political answer. Thank you very much. I hope you have the same answer when we get it here for that. Okay, I'm gonna...
Can I just run that, can I just run that one question back through? Procedurally, what is supposed to happen while this application before the planning board, no work whatsoever, it turns into a problem. If and when the board should choose to give us approval and we file for a building permit, at that time, if we file for a building permit, then file for a demolition permit. When they obtain a demolition permit, that would be when the house can be removed, but not before that.
That's...
Then the village should have their own regulations to follow.
Yes.
But it should not be, it's not permitted to occur.
Because I feel that if we don't follow any of the rules that are being set in place and letting people go with a slap on the wrist, everybody's gonna do what they want.
I can say this, this application's been before this board now for four years.
Okay.
And in four years, that was...
Because it wasn't time for them to...
The last meeting is...
We're doing a good job.
The voters, they don't want it.
Lindsey Dicko?
Well, like I said, the last meeting was two years, now it's four years. Now this has been here for four years, bottoms line. But I just wanna ask a question that you're, is there a permit request to have that building removed?
No.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm sitting here, I'm looking at this board. Last year, I was sitting at a meeting in South Bloomington Grove, and I was looking at all you guys. And it, and I was talking to a realtor, over 3,000 acres have been purchased here by, we're not allowed to talk about that community, but a house in South, in South, in Marywall had 750 registered voters to, and they did a mail-in vote, every single one of you people are done.
Again, again, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but we don't wanna hear your...
All right, so, but, all right, but I'm just, all right, so we'll forget about that. With the project, okay?
Thank you.
What needs to be done? Is it Section 8 houses?
No.
At all? Because what, I've done a lot of research and a lot of things. There's only two things to stop this, what's, what's happening all around, okay? One is, we have to have an emergency meeting, just like they do in another community all over Zoom, now you're not allowed to be in public, but we have to have an emergency meeting and have a Section 8 lottery, okay? If we, you create a Section 8 lottery, which is legal in the state of New York, it's in Manhattan, it's in Yonkers, it's in huge communities throughout the country, throughout the state, okay? People, they're, these builders will not come into your community if they don't have control of their own Section 8, because 97% of them are on Section 8 houses. So they have their own list, they have, and that's how they come in, they build the houses, and then they do everything Section 8, okay? And everything that they tell you this, it's all a lie, it's all just to get it, and then they'll change it. They'll change the board, they'll change everything. All they want is approval, they want the precedent, they'll put the two properties together, and then they're done, okay? So, and to think anything else is, is just naive, okay? All I have to do is look around at what's going on. The second thing that needs to be done is we have to have a historic, a historical society. They will not wanna come here if they can't just tear stuff down and, and, but the Section 8 housing, if you do a Section 8 housing law in the state, in the town of Washingtonville, they will not build here. They will not build here.
I'm sorry, when you say that, who are you referring to?
Who do you think? It's the I.O.S. It's the...
L.L.C.
That's fine.
No, that's not a representation of the...
What's that?
That is not a representation of the...
Okay. Well, you're not gonna be a board member in the next election, I can tell you this, because there's, there's gonna be a mail-in vote, and none of you guys are gonna be here. So for you to vote for this project and, and vote to put the two properties together, all you're doing is letting the, the town of Washingtonville go.
So I believe John clarified that this is just a process when applicant comes?
Well, it's been for four years. How long the process does it take?
As long as it takes.
We want all the information to be permanent and perfect to be laws in the zoning ordinances of the village. As you said before, you don't want someone that's coming, rush through, tear down a building, and overnight you got whatever filled up.
Up to four years, you just say, you can't just say no? We've thought about it long and hard after four years, our answer is no?
We've considered all these studies for reasons, to make sure that it fits and it won't be a hazard, and it won't be an issue.
Well, what kind of people are here? Why do you say that? Why do you think we should hear this?
That is the last person I...
I have a question.
Guys?
I just have a question. You get a chance, just call me outside.
What's your name, sir? You can press your next.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, I'll...
We have made it through the comment list.
We have some...
Anybody?
So as of now, we've made it through the comment list, and if there was not one of you that would like to comment?
I have, um, Mr. Randy Winston.
Yes, I just have a question. Um, I wanted to make sure I got my numbers right. The taxes, the income from this property was 21,000, actually? 21,000, was that?
I'm not sure when that number came from.
I don't know either, that's why I'm trying to ask you. What, what are the taxes on, proposed taxes? Well, anybody on the board. We heard about income into Washingtonville of 21,000, 23,000?
Where you heard that from?
Well, it was just Memphis. Yeah. So I'm just curious.
That comment did not come from our board.
So that's, that's, that's a fallacy, so that number is a fallacy.
I, I heard the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, but it didn't come from this board.
Okay.
Okay, and we hear that Mr. Marubuca was the source, but we have not heard about it.
Okay, 'cause I paid $20,000 a year on taxes at my house.
That was probably referring to the village taxes only, not town and school.
Okay, gotcha.
Just to clarify.
Okay.
I checked the county websites and everything else, and throwing in 2,000 for village taxes, it was about 17 grand. What, what's their current?
Okay.
So...
They pay 17,000 for everything?
Correct. That's town, city, school.
Because you're talking just village, really, just?
No, no, for the village, I just rounded it, I, I made the village, like, two grand. I think 17, so I just rounded it back a little bit. But everything else equals to about 14 something, and two of yours is 15.
But I think you're talking just village taxes on this property. Okay, so...
I said no, it's not a common...
Yeah, their taxes haven't been discussed between this board and the applicant.
Yeah, not be the town tax assessment.
I found it on Facebook. We have this in Washingtonville. Okay, so, it's been around. A Orlando Citron said, so Mayor Buka was saying the apartments that are trying to get passed in Washingtonville will generate 21,000 property taxes per year. Okay, okay. We're clear about that with the name, we don't, not... And then somebody, you already spoke, you already spoke. Does anybody who did not get a chance to speak, would you like to speak?
I have a question.
Okay, so again, I just remind you that it's, it is public comment, so if you have a comment, we're, that, we're happy to hear it.
It's not a comment. I just, I just wanna make a comment.
Okay, can you, I'm sorry, can you state your name?
My name is Lisa, and I live on 42.08, um, and I see four people sitting up there, and I know that you can't answer the question, but I would love to know what for, if you're gonna create, if you want these buildings built there.
So I say more times, sorry, yeah.
Do you want these buildings?
I just, you want the building built there. And where four of you want that up, and I know that you can't answer that, but that's...
Can I answer one of my opinions? I can't. Apologies, I can't answer.
We have to gather all the information to help.
Well, when is the final answer? From the outset, or circle back out?
Once the, I can, I can explain the process again to, to the public.
Well, when is the final, final answer?
So, right now, what we're doing is we're collecting the public hearing comments, they're gonna be processed through the board, um, as Mr. Pritchett explained, the board's gonna filter through them, either ask for revisions to the plan, um, or ask for any mitigating factors that they found relevant pursuant to the public comments that were received. Once that's done, there will be, um, a revised site plan. We intend to keep the public hearing open because we feel if the public should have a chance to comment at that time as well. Once the public hearing is closed, at that time, the SECR determinations need to be made, whichever way the board decides on that, once the SECR determinations are made, and there's two different, you know, SECRs of, there's two different processes you can go, so, um, once those determinations are made, at that point, it has to go back to the CBA for the variance question, asked to go before the AHRB for the aesthetic question for the architecture, and then this board can make a final decision. So we, um, and obviously, I can't tell you when SECR is gonna, when we're gonna be ready to make a determination on SECR, because my advice to the board is not to do so until we've received and fully considered all the studies, um, that we've asked for thus far.
We guys post online, and SECR is updated?
Yeah, we're, so I am trying to coordinate, um, posting either to the village website, I've asked the applicant to develop a Dropbox link, um, I think that there's documents that we can add to that Dropbox link, I think that would be a valuable...
As big as we can, as we can upstairs and back.
Right, right, and I think there's some things that we can add to it even now, so, uh, I'll, I will work to have that, and then that Dropbox link can be available to the public, and you guys can share it with one another. Like I said, I already shared my email, they can ask me for it, that's Rich Klor Jr., who's the acting chair for it, um, and of course, you can ask the Washingtonville Building Department for any application materials related to this application, because they will have it on file. Could I just say one thing, please? Just state your name and, and address for the record.
I'm Nancy. What I, what I wanna say, hold on, you folks, are, Charlotte's is an interesting name, but fairness, four people...
We can't hear you up here.
The four people sitting there are appointed, they are appointed to staggered terms, if I'm not wrong, and each have a term. You're appointed for certain terms.
We're volunteers.
Volunteers.
No, you're volunteers, but you're appointed for staggered terms, for four years, that year's, two years, one year.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
They are appointed for a specific term.
Look, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
But they are appointed by the village board for those terms, so they are not elected officially. The village board, composed of five people, who have received your support, staggered, they run with two-year terms, everybody?
Two.
Two-year terms. Probably three at one time to another. They make the appointments for the planning board and the village zoning board as those individual terms of each person expire.
It's five people.
There's five people. I don't know, do you have a good number?
We discussed it at the meeting, we just...
Oh, okay. So if you have five members, I can't say how they do it, but it used to be one expires in 16, 17, 18, 19, and 12. So that you, and sometimes it's two people at a time, so that you don't change the whole board all at once. And that's the same reason with the village board, we're terrible. So I hope that helped a little bit with the understanding, but these folks here, they give their time voluntarily, so best of my knowledge, you're not paid, correct?
No, please.
In Bloomington Grove, there used to be a...
So, I just wanted to bring that up just a little bit for information.
It turns up in March of 23 is the vote, March of 23. But that would be the village board.
Does anybody else have, yes, ma'am? Please state your name and, uh, address for the record.
My name is Santa McKagan, I live on Maryport in Washingtonville since 1982. Over those years, we've had notices that you have to watch the water in, in the summertime that there, there's droughts and this and that, and now we just got a new sewer system. How is 28 more apartments going to impact that sewer system that we just got a nice little raised, uh, yeah, and I owe $30 a month for these guys, well, I'm not a water source. How, how this is impacting our water and our sewer? Is that why we got a new sewer plant or system? Because they thought we were gonna get this?
No.
It was required by New York State, I believe, I guess, Anton, the statute.
Okay, and the one they put in is just enough of what we have now, or will that include that?
It was an upgrade of, uh, you can ask the board, the village board, I, I'm not really familiar with it, but I have sat in on some of their meetings, but it was an upgrade that was overdue previously for some other projects years back that was overworking the system, and the system was unfortunately already past capacity, so they upgraded it, um, I don't know where the mayor went, but you can't say the exact numbers, I think it's almost double the capacity as the previous one's gonna happen.
So, some information on that, I believe the number is, the plan needed an upgrade, they also did an expansion, and we need the expansion, it was 200,000 gallons of additional stuff, after the miracle, and I believe the bond was like 13 million dollars.
How many gallons would you use roughly again?
I think the Department of Health is 150 gallons per person.
110 gallons per day, that's...
And how many bedrooms did each...
Two.
There's a, there's a calculation machine, we've already, um, discussed this with Department of Public Works in Washington, to make sure that there's enough capacity for the project because there's more than enough capacity in this project. The, uh, we're looking at roughly around 3,000, 80 gallons per day.
I just have one question from what you said about all the different new variances and changing all the different, like, we might change the plan again after all of this. But by creating the precedent, by putting the two properties together, just say no? Just say no? After four years? I don't understand why we're even talking about it, because once they do that, once you do that, Washingtonville's gone. And by you guys agreeing to letting two properties join together, you can't do it, you just can't do it for the benefit of all the people of Washingtonville that have grown up here and raised their kids and did all this stuff for this town. For you guys to allow that, it's gonna destroy the town, and if you don't understand that, I don't, I don't know why we're even here. Why is, that's why everybody's here, you cannot allow that, now? It's just no.
Have you reviewed the lot line that they're asking to get removed?
What's that?
Have you reviewed the lot line that they're asking to get removed?
It doesn't, well, it doesn't matter what that lot, what you do is for one lot line, you're doing it, you can do it all.
Please review it.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. Hold on, I'm sorry.
Regarding, everyone's talking about two bedrooms, is there a restriction to the number of people it can occupy?
Pursuant to New York State Building Code, there are occupancy restrictions, that's a really...
And what is that?
It's, it's like a really specific calculation that's done pursuant to the spurt footage of the, like, the kitchen versus the living areas, um, I can't answer on the spot, but if you look at the code, it's...
Can you find out? Who's the...
The enforcement of the state building code is done by the Washingtonville Building Inspector for the village properties. Okay, so, uh, you have, yes, you have just one minute and a half, one hour of your time, so what year was the property purchased? I, I don't have...
That is public information?
2016, 17, 18, 19, 2019.
So 6, 26, yes. This has been in place for four years? You've been working on this for four years?
Next Tuesday night.
And, and we are allowed, right? Like, the village is allowed, if someone purchases a lot, with the assumption that they can build something, there's no assumption, it shouldn't be assumed on their part that they can just do what they intend to do.
Yeah, they have, there's a, there's a importance with something, regulations and that.
Right, so we can continue to say no, you can continue to say no, it's just not okay.
What if...
Okay, okay.
You were trying to listen to the person who has the time, if we could keep it down a little bit?
If it's not okay...
What did I just say? I said if it complies with the zoning board, if it complies, what do you say?
No, no.
That's not how it works.
So, if you're hearing the people, this course, if you have, if you have comments, I'm happy to continue your time, but it has to be public comments. I'm publicly commenting. Okay, so, okay, sorry.
This board does not have the authority or the right to make up laws or make decisions based on their opinions. Their job is to review the project for its conformance with the current existing village laws and regulations, and in this case, also additionally, federal and state regulations. Their job is to determine if this project meets the requirements of laws established by other boards, other agencies. It is not to make laws. Making the laws is the job of other boards.
What board?
Village law is established by the village board. Rules regarding the highway access, it's a New York State Highway, it is owned by New York State, it is a New York State regulation as to how this road be accessed, developed, and maintained. The floodway is a FEMA MATT feature, it's regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers and by FEMA. They have established federal regulations regarding that. The village does some, have some additional regulations which are above and beyond what are required by federal law, but this board is limited to evaluating the floodplain based upon the existing laws. They can't make up new laws to evaluate this project. So, I understand there's a, a lot of consensus that they should just say no, but they can't do that. They, if they wanna, if there is a problem with this project where it doesn't meet existing laws, then yes, they can say no. But they can't just say no arbitrarily.
Excuse me, can they say no to the lot line?
Yes.
Yes, to you. Are they able on their own to say no to a potential lot line change?
This is zoning.
In regard to a lot line change or merger, that is regulated by the subdivision regulation for the village. If they comply with the requirements of the regulation, then they are obligated to say yes, and if they don't comply, they have the right to say no. But they don't have an arbitrary right to say no.
How did the two subdivisions get into lines?
That line is not a subdivision, we're talking about lot, this is not a subdivision. I understand, but that's, this lot line change. If it's regulated at all, regulated by the subdivision regulation. So let me ask you a question. There are no separate lot merger regulations in the village.
Doesn't the, doesn't Bill Curly, once that the April 14th board, doesn't think the board, I was out right on the trifle, that's sitting in front of us, it does not fit in with the local environment? There's your answer.
What?
Black and white, you can see it.
Maybe we should...
Name and address for the record, please.
Chairman, this is Bill McChiller, nine Carl Alway. I only moved here in 2018, and I hear everyone talking about tra, oh, traffic, water, flooding, the historical activity of the community. My concern is this, not too long ago, there was a fire behind my house, my neighbor on Hampshire. I was, luckily, I was pulling into my driveway and I saw that, and I ran across the yard, and I was able to help the young guy. Thankfully, the police responded, and they were able to put the fire out. My concern is our first responders' response times, the traffic in the community. What, uh, the fire department is on 94, uh, the police department's on 94, the paramedics are, are by stewards. Those traffic lights, you know, like, the traffic alone, that's my biggest concern. You know, like, everyone's really spoken pretty much truth. I'm worried about, you know, like, the police need to get where they gotta go. The fire department is getting where they gotta go. Safety should be number one in our community. I guess I'm only, I'm new to this community. I'm, I'm used to the LIPD and the, the Arstown Police Department showing up like that, so that's, you know, so, I'm not trying to get any party tickets, fellas, I'm just, you know, just, you know, stay in the way. You know, these guys need our support, so like, if, you know, you guys wanted your traffic studies or, or why not, at least look into their, into their well-being and our safety as well. That's all.
Anyone who else that hasn't had a chance to speak that wishes to speak tonight?
I'd like to ask a question real quick, a subtle one. My name is Diego Santiago. I've lived here since 2018, I'm a 26th man.
I'm sorry, sir, what was your name?
Diego Santiago. Um, my only question is, if everything is approved, when will the board vote? Will it happen this calendar year, or will it happen the next calendar year?
We can't answer that. Uh, once the applicant has submitted complete documentation addressing all comments, then the board can evaluate its decision. We have no control over how long it takes them to provide that information.
Thank you.
Anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak? So, um, Bob has questions.
I have a question from Mr. Grant.
Okay.
Regarding ingress to the rear of the building, prevent the emergency. Snow back there, two, three feet of snow that we get often. There's no ingress in the back of the building? Firefighters, anybody else?
I'm sorry, Bob, did you say ingress or?
Egress.
Egress.
The rear of the building. There's only windows in the back. I mean, the event, the fire department has to do a rescue, and you're still in a snowstorm.
That's a very good point, so. Very pleased.
That, that issue is storyable, so you have a storyable area?
I always, I know what you're asking.
I saw the park there.
I noticed it myself when I was in the, sorry, recreation area around this rate.
Now I got two more questions, and these may stand just a little bit. Flooding, the information you're working with is basically 2,000,000 data, the floodline data, correct?
That's correct.
So we know for a fact that the water came up significantly higher than what came off of the floor. What can you do, or will you do, to mitigate that situation?
So I actually wanna ask the board there, I've noticed there's a flyer floating around that's got a photo. I'd love to know the source of that photo, the date of the photo, what storm it created. Because if I know that information, I can go back and look at some other information and check elevations. And if I need to raise the building up more, I can look at it. It's not a problem.
The length was there. Also, there's our future, Washington, the floods are right there.